I call the meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the December 18th, 2023 study session of the Ashland City Council. We will start with public input and we have one speaker, Scott Fine. Scott, if you can come up to the microphone there and speak in nice and close to it. And then Dana will give you a signal. You'll have three minutes. When you have 20 seconds left, she'll give you a single chime. And when you have, when your time is up, she'll give you a double chime. Okay? Go ahead and please say your name and the city where you live.
Yeah, hi, good evening. My name is Scott Fine. I live outside the city limits of Ashland, up on the Green Springs. But my family does all their business here and my children go to school here in Ashland. We pay a number of taxes to the city of Ashland in particular for schools. Reason why I'm here is I have some pretty significant concerns over your proposed camping ordinance. The 250 feet relative to schools is really grossly insufficient. And there's a number of errors on your maps relative to the enforcement zones. In particular, it does not include Willow Wind School where my children attend school. And I had sent Mayor Graham an email about this last weekend. It's very concerning to me after what I've witnessed the last several years with my kids going to school there. First with the rogue retreat that was down on East Main at the church that's just outside the city limits in the UGB. And then what has gone on on East Main since there has been a campground over here at the Public Works Center. And I just would really implore all of you to take my concerns seriously as a parent. If we're going to look at things in this community that need to be certain distances from schools, I personally think it's really insufficient 250 feet. If we're going to say marijuana dispensaries can't be closer than 1,000 feet to schools. So there just needs to be a little bit consistency with this difficult issue that you guys are trying to tackle. And I just think we're not sufficiently looking out for our children in the community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We are moving on to the audit results and annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year 2023.
Good evening, mayor and councilors. Mary Ann Berry, Finance Director, and I also have with me Dana Mason, who is our Audit and Budget Lead. She did the bulk of the audit and I thought she really deserved that call out. So tonight, we are presenting the audit results for the fiscal year 2023. As you may recall, on September 19th, a preliminary financial summary for the period ending June 30th was presented to council.
Mary Ann, can you tip that microphone up a little bit?
Yep, sure.
That'll help the folks at home. Thank you.
Perfect. So we presented a financial summary back in September 19th and there hasn't been any material changes since then. So tonight, we will be focusing on the audit results from the annual and the annual comprehensive financial report, also called the ACFER. The annual audit is required by state statute and is often over, an overlooked effort except for those who are intimately involved with organizing it or when there are significant findings, which there were none this year. I'm also excited to introduce you, as I said, to Dana Mason, our Audit and Budget Lead, who has led the work for this audit. I want to thank her for stepping into this important role for the city and also thank the rest of our accounting and city teams whose effort are integral to ensuring a thorough and seamless audit. A shout out is also in order to our Accounting Operations Team, Miranda Iwamoto and Jesse Smith, who works closely with Dana on the audit and continues to work tirelessly to ensure our general ledger is complete and accurate. At this time, I would like to introduce our external auditors, Moss Adams. Amanda McClary Moore is here. She's a partner for Moss and she will walk through the audit results, their methodologies, and more importantly, their opinions as it relates to the financial statements and internal controls. Is she showing?
Can you make her a panelist?
Has she not called in yet? Oh, they're both on there, okay. If it's an issue, we can do the presentation, put the presentation up and then put her on speakerphone? Is it? No? We can?
Yeah, sorry.
Do you want to put the presentation on just a second?
If you guys can turn it over.
Okay. So I'm going in here now because this was Amanda's presentation. She was going to present the actual audit results as it relates to their methodologies. And I'm going to help Dana here and put it back on. Apologize, everyone.
Just have to scroll.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Amanda.
Oh, okay, because it's a, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So the audit does take several phases. We started earlier in the year with the single audit. And as we moved into closing or starting to close the year, the audit team starts to work with our team, the accounting department, and specifically Dana on schedules and reviewing a host of information that has gone on through the year. In the, in your packet, you'll have gotten the ACFER. It's a very dense report. I wasn't planning on going through it specifically because obviously we were going to have Amanda and Kim present this. What we have at the moment is their presentation and so I'm going to have you scroll up. This is not what I know. It's right here. How about?
Okay.
Want to switch places?
Yeah.
Want to switch places?
Sure.
Sorry, everyone.
Going with the flow. Just a quick question. Is, I see Kim is on. Is she able to be part of this? Are we able to turn her into a panelist?
Yeah, we're turning her.
They need to make us a panelist. All we can do is.
And you can keep going, Mary Ann, but if, I know that, I'm sure that they would like to be able to be part of this.
So I just sent them an invitation. Sorry, everyone. Everyone.
There she is. Amanda's here.
Thank goodness, Amanda.
Can you hear me okay?
Yay, yes, thank you.
Did you, did you send a link to Kim as well? Oh, there she is.
Yeah, she's coming on.
And then are we able to share our presentation or do you have it on the screen?
We have it up here. How do you want to handle that, Sabrina?
Share.
You can share.
Okay.
And Amanda, if you can, if there's any possible way to turn up your volume a little bit for your microphone, that would help us.
Yes.
Okay, we can see your presentation.
Okay, great. How's this on sound? I don't know how to turn up my microphone. I've never done that before.
It's okay, we can hear you.
You can hear, okay. I'll just, I'll stand as close to my laptop as possible. I don't have a headset on. So I'll just start with introductions. I'm Amanda McClary Moore. I'm a partner with Moss Adams and have worked with the city for a few years now on their audits. I work, 95% of my time is with cities and counties. So that's how, that's how I spend my day as an auditor. So we're in our, our last week right now. So just working morning to night these days. And then I'll let Kim introduce herself.
Can you guys hear me as well?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, great.
So I'm Kim Reno and I work with Amanda in our Metford location. I've worked with Moss for about 11 years now and worked with the city of Ashland ever since we got that audit a few years ago. So like Amanda said, we're in our last weekend and burning the midnight oil.
So with, so with that, we have a, just a short presentation to go through our audit results. Kim is actually going to take us through the first part of the presentation. Kim, just let me know when you want me to flip the slide.
Okay, sounds good. So this first part is just kind of the agenda. These are kind of the high points of what we're going to go over today. The first one is just the engagement team. So, so who makes up our team? Where are they from and who works on your guys' audit? The next one is the nature of the services provided. And then the auditor opinions and reports, which is probably the most important and why everyone is here. We'll also go over any internal control related matters and communicate our communications to those charged with governance. And then the last one, which everyone is always excited for, is the new standards. So for our engagement team, the first one is Amanda McClary Moore. She just introduced herself. And then Kim Reno, that's me. There is a whole group of team that's not on this slide and they come from both our Portland, Eugene, and Metford locations. And they're all the way from a staff to manager level. And they are responsible for various parts of the binder and helping us through execution of the audit. This next slide kind of goes over the nature of the services provided. That first one just basically says that we audit the city financial statements and we do that audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. Not only do we do generally accepted auditing standards, but we also perform our audit in accordance with governmental standards. The next item is that we assist with the technical review of the ACFER, which as Mary Ann pointed out, Dana was a huge help this year and she created that 200-page document. And we helped kind of review that and go over that as well as look over the, kind of the fine points in order for you guys to get the Government Finance Officers Association certificate. You guys get that every year and that just kind of means that your guys' financial statements are clean, organized, and, and very easily readable for the viewer. And then the next one is compliance with testing and reporting under Oregon Minimum Standards. Since the city is a government municipality, they are required to have Oregon Minimum Audit, which is basically procurement and budgeting standards. So we look at that. And then the next item is a single audit of federal grant programs under Uniform Guidance. So once the city has expended $750,000 of federal funds, you guys are required to have a single audit. And we come in there and we perform different procedures over the various major programs. And then lastly, the last service we provide is just kind of reporting. So as Mary Ann kind of talked about briefly, you know, there's an initial stage to the audit where we talk to those charged with government and, and management about the overall audit plan and how we're going to test and perform our procedures. And then after all that's done, we come here, which is what we're doing today, and we go over the audit results and communicate any sort of internal control findings or any issues with non-compliance. These are the various critical audit areas. This in no means is all the areas that we audit, but these are definitely the areas that we kind of spend more of our time looking at. So to begin with, with internal controls and the IT environment, obviously with the digital age, the city has a number of IT items and we look at the different systems and how they integrate to each other, what kind of reports are being produced and who's looking at those as well as who has access to those reports and is there any segregation issues? And then we also look at internal controls. So internal controls are, are things that management puts in place to make sure that a control wouldn't slip through the cracks or if it did, that they would detect it before it got all the way to the financial statements. So we do walkthroughs over the various sections for internal controls. Cash and investments. So there we might do confirmations to third-party institutions. And then revenue and receivables. We look at that both from an analytical standpoint as well as from the single audit. Receivables, we might do confirmations of balances, but we also look at subsequent receipts on those receivables. Capital assets, we'll obtain a roll forward and then we'll test any material additions or deletions to that as well as perform a reconciliation of your capital asset additions to capital outlay. Long-term debt, that's another section where we obtain confirmations for from third-party institutions. Accrued liabilities, this is one of the significant estimates on your guys' books. And we get reports from the actuaries. We kind of look over their qualifications and then we also tie those out to the financial statements as well as perform limited tests over the inputs that go into those. Grants, we kind of look at from the revenue perspective, but also, as I had mentioned, from the single audit perspective. And then financial close and reporting, we look at kind of what controls does management have? You know, what are they doing on a monthly or an annual basis to make sure that those financial statements are clear, understandable, and complete? And then Oregon Minimum Standards, as I had mentioned, most of those procedures have to do with budget and procurement law.
So after we do all of that work that Kim just walked you through, just some high-level background on some of the procedures that we perform over the city's financial statements, we issue our audit reports. And you can see here on the slide, we issue four audit reports as part of our audit. The first one on the slide there is our report over your financial statements. So our responsibility is to express an opinion over your financial statements and to determine whether there are any material errors in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So we test, when we do all of that work that Kim was mentioning, we test transactions using materiality. So we don't look at every single transaction that the city has during the year. We use materiality to scope our transactions. So when you see that within your audit report that we are confirming that the financial statements are materially correct, that's what that, that means is that, that we don't look at every single transaction. We set a materiality threshold for each one of your opinion units. And you can see on the slide there, we express what is called a clean or unmodified opinion. That means that we were able to get comfortable that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles. Of course, the city follows the governmental accounting principles or the GASB statements in order to put together those financial statements. To highlight the complexity of the statements, which Kim had touched on as well, that in addition to all of the accounting standards that you have to follow in order to put together a financial statement, the city also does some extra work in order to get the GFOA certificate award each year, which means that the information at the back of the financial statements, which is your statistical information, it presents about 10 years' worth of data, as well as your integrity section that includes your transmittal letter. Those are additional items that are not required under the generally accepted accounting principles. Those are required though in order to obtain that GFOA certificate. So, so overall, really good results there. If you, if you can see the slide well, you can see that I really have nothing but good results to present today, which is always nice. That second report is because, because you are an Oregon municipality, can walk through some of the audit procedures that we have to do. You have to maintain compliance with a number of the Oregon revised statutes and Oregon administrative rules. And the State Department has determined what is important for auditors to test. Kim mentioned budget and procurement. Those two areas probably are the areas where we spend the most amount of time. But if you look through our audit report, there's a number of other areas that we look at compliance over as well. For instance, where you invest your, your cash and investments. There are some rules around that. If you receive gas tax monies, there's, there's rules about how you can spend that funding. So there's a number of compliance areas that we do have to test as part of our audit. And if we were to identify any compliance issues, it would be included in that report. A common, a common finding in that report can be over expenditures. But as you can see on the slide there, we had no compliance findings to report. In addition to that, that report also includes our internal control assessment. So we don't issue an opinion over your internal controls, but as Kim walked through, we do look at your internal controls. And if, if, as part of that review, we identify an error that slipped through the cracks, we have to assess that error. And if we think that it's significant enough to let you know about, it gets included in this report. If we think a material error could slip through the cracks, that also would be included in this report and called a material weakness. So as you can see, we did not identify any control deficiencies that rose to the level of significant deficiency or material weakness or instances of non-compliance to report. The Governmental Auditing Standards Report is actually very similar to the Oregon Audit Report. So this report is, is strictly for those types of control findings. So if we had that significant deficiency or material weakness to report, it would get included in this report as well. So it would be included in two reports. In addition to that, Governmental Auditing Standards have us look at areas that have compliance components related to your financial statements. So these would be compliance findings that could have a material impact on the financial statement. So as you can see on the slide there, we had no reportable findings and we did not have those internal control deficiencies identified that rose to the level of significant deficiency or material weakness. The last one is, that is our Uniform Guidance Report. This is our report over your federal awards. We audited one major program this year, which was the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Cluster. It's a mouthful. So that was the, the major program that we audited this year. We audit that under Uniform Guidance and they put out what is called the Compliance Supplement annually that gives us the key areas that are required to be tested under Uniform Guidance for compliance. And if, in addition to that, so when we talk about internal controls, in addition to having internal controls over financial reporting, you also have to have internal controls over compliance with your federal programs. So we look at internal controls another, another time as well. So you could essentially end up with some sort of finding over internal controls over compliance that you may not have over financial reporting. If we identified instances of non-compliance with the federal award or deficiencies over compliance that rose to the level of significant deficiency or material weakness, it'd be included in this report. You can see on the screen there, we did not identify any instances of non-compliance with your federal award that we tested or identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses over compliance with those requirements. So overall, good news to report there. The next slide kind of goes into additional information that our audit standards tell us is important to communicate to those charged with governance, so in this case, city council, that are not otherwise included in our audit reports. And so I will, I will walk through that next unless, unless you think this is a good point to ask questions.
Let's go ahead and see if council has any questions up to this point.
Okay.
And seeing none, let's carry on.
All right. So as I mentioned, in addition to our audit reports that get included within your financial statements, we issue a separate letter to those charged with governance that does not get included within your financial statements. And this is just a way for us to communicate to you some significant items that occur during the audit process and highlight some areas in your financial statements that might be important for you to look at or be aware of. The first one is our plan, scope, and timing. So as part of our planning process, we put together a plan on when we're going to complete the audit and when we're going to, and when we're going to finish the audit and issue our reports. And if we had any significant changes due to that, due to anything, we would let you know. Of course, we are, you're getting to issue before year end, which is the ultimate goal. And so nothing. Of course, you're getting to issue before year-end, which is the ultimate goal, and so, nothing to report there. The next one is on significant accounting policies. So, in your financial statements in Note 1, it identifies all of your significant accounting policies. Management is responsible for selecting those accounting policies and we do review them each year to see if there are any significant changes year over year. There was no significant changes in the current year, although you did have to implement a new accounting standard, GASB 96, on subscription-based information technology arrangements. So, in the prior year, you had to adopt a new standard to put leases on your books. So, whether you were a lessy or a lessor required you to record some adjustments to your financial statements. This is essentially leasing for any of your software that requires to be, that has those same types of commitments. So, it really follows that lease guidance, but for software. And that did not have a significant impact to the city's financial statements, but it is something new that you will have to follow going forward. So, as part of putting the financial statements together, there are disclosures and items within the financial statements that are based on estimates. Kim highlighted a few of those when she was talking about your purse liabilities and your other post-employment benefit liabilities. Capital assets have some estimates that get involved in determining the lives of those assets. So, that just highlights a few of the areas that the financial statements are based on, estimates that management has to use in order to put together the financial statements. If as part of our audit process, we identified an error, of course, we would look at the internal controls over that. But if it was a material error that management had to correct in order for the financial statements to be materially correct and get that clean opinion, it would be something that we would communicate to you. There's another type of adjustment. If we identified an error in your financial statements that was not material, so it would not impact our opinion on the financial statements, management does have the ability to not record that adjustment and still get a clean opinion. However, that is something that we would communicate to you as part of this process. You can see on the screen there, we did not have any audit adjustments as part of our audit. We didn't have any that management had to make in order for the financial statements to be materially correct. And then that we didn't have any that management did not record that would not have impacted our opinion either way. These are kind of, some of these last few items, including that one, are just nice to highlight. These are the things that we would communicate if we had them, so that you know. But they're also nice to communicate that we didn't have any of these issues or concerns. So, for instance, if we had any disagreements with management, whether it was on an accounting policy or just really had difficulties getting the audit done, that would be something that we would communicate. As you can see there on the slide, we didn't have any disagreements with management and everybody was great at giving us the information that we need in order to complete the audit timely. And lastly, I'm not going to go through an entire accounting lesson with you, but I just wanted to highlight a few of the new accounting standards that impact the city this year as well as in the next couple of years. There's two on this slide that were effective this year that did not impact the city's financial statements at all. That first one is on conduit debt obligations. If you had any conduit debt, there's some new accounting guidance that requires some additional considerations on whether or not you would need to put a liability on your books. So, this would be if another entity needed the city's help in getting some sort of general obligation bond or other type of bond and the city was not necessarily on the hook for it, but assisted with that process. There's some disclosures around that that are required to be in the financial statements. And now, some new accounting guidance that requires you to consider whether you need a liability on the financial statements. I talked about GASB 96, that was the leases for your software. The next one is GASB 94 for public-public and public-private partnerships. So, if you have a partnership with either another public entity or a private entity, there is some guidance in there on when you record transactions in the financial statements. It is very similar to that lease accounting guidance. When the GASB released the lease accounting guidance, they really went all out on the types of transactions that it was going to cover. The next two are effective over the next two years and actually, these were the same as last year. The GASB hasn't issued any new statements since last year. So, it's been very quiet on their front, which has been nice. The first one is over corrections of errors. If as part of the closing of the books, management were to identify an error in the financial statements, there is some new guidance on how you might correct that, including how it might impact some of your supplemental information or required supplement or information. So, either of those two things, they have put some guidance in there where there was no guidance before. It also addresses some guidance related to some accounting standards that didn't have transition guidance on how you report implementing an accounting standard. And then the last one's on compensated absences. So, there's some new guidance on accruals and when to accrue those and what types of accruals. And it actually is one of the only accounting standards that I've read through that actually eliminates a little bit of information out of your notes. Not a lot, but it does summarize a little bit of information with respect to how you report your compensated absences within the financial statements. Right now, you should be showing your increases and decreases annually. The new guidance allows you just to do a change year over year in your compensated absence of balances. So, not a lot on the horizon as far as changes unless you enter into some transactions that haven't impacted the city before, that you'll have to use some of this guidance for. But overall, it's been pretty quiet. And with that, we just want to say thank you. Mary Ann and Dana were great. It was, you know, it was a transition year with not having Cindy there, after having Cindy who prepared the financial statements for so long, having a new team and still able to get your audit done on time. So, overall, it went really well. And with that, we'll turn it to you and see if you have any questions about the audit or the audit process.
Questions, councillors? Would anyone care, any statements that anyone would like to make on the way, as our folks are finishing up here? The one thing I do want to just point out is we're receiving this during a study session because this audit is something the council receives, it's not something the council approves. And so, this is not going to be coming in front of the council for any sort of a vote. It simply is brought in by our accountants and received by the council, just in case anybody has questions about that. Any comments? Councillor Kaplan?
Yes. Thank you. I look forward to this audit report and the full financial statements every year. So, I'm really happy to see it again this year, of course, and very pleased with the excellent results, the clean opinion and all the information that you present to us. I'm also happy with the presentation. You said that there were a few changes in presentation. I noticed that very helpfully, all of the wide tables of the statistical information at the end fit on one page, making it a lot easier to read than they were in the past where they'd go over two pages. So, I think of the audit report as, you know, obviously, giving us and the council and the citizens of residents of Ashland confidence in the financial information that we're receiving from our financial team. So, thanks for giving us that confidence. Because I look a lot at the financial reports themselves and the full financial report that comes at the end of the year provides a really great snapshot of the financial health of our city as a whole and then also divided into government versus business-type accounts. And then each individual account, we've got lots of different funds that we look at. But I also get more, I like all that and I look at all that, but I get really excited about the statistical information at the end and that's why I noticed some of the changes there. Because that's, you know, 40 pages or so of really good information about some of the dynamics in our community. For example, you can see in there a 10-year trend of the food and beverage tax. So, our food and beverage receipts now are back up to, pretty close to what they were in 2018 and 2019. So, you know, that's good news. On the other hand, our lodging tax has not caught up. It's about two-thirds of what it was, you know, back in 2018, 2019. So, it's something that we have to think about in terms of our business community's, you know, health and what's going on with our community. So, that's really just to say that there's a wealth of information and for anybody that wants to pick up this, I think somebody said it was 171 pages. It's a great read. Really, you can learn a lot about what's going on in the city government and in the community by taking a look at this. So, thanks to the Herculean effort of the finance team putting this all together. I know it takes a lot of work over these last several months. And thanks again to Moss Adams and Amanda and Kim for really helping us through it, giving us confidence in what we're reading. Thanks.
Councillor Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to give my gratitude to both our team and to Moss Adams and Amanda and Kim. I know that it was a year of transition for us. Thank you for stepping to the plate and for the amazing work you do. And Amanda, I'm just, the one thing I wanted to add, Councillor Kaplan covered it perfectly. I like the term "unmodified" a lot better than "unqualified" because that always created so much confusion. So, I'm not exactly sure when that change went into effect, but it is much more direct and better understood than the other verbiage. So, thank you very much for the time and for the detailed report.
And I would just add that the most important thing that this council does is invest the public purse. And the only way that we can do that effectively is if we have a team of people managing that money that we trust and that year over year comes back with a clean audit. And that's what your team does. Thank you so much for continuing that good track record. And Dana, thank you so much for leading the cause and Mary Ann, of course, and the rest of the team. It is gratifying but not surprising that we have another clean audit. And thank you so much to Amanda and your team for doing that part of the city's work so that we can make sure that we do have the financial systems that we need to back the decisions this council is making. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Amanda and Kim.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on now to the City Council Standing Advisory Committee's Work Plans Review. And this is the first time we have done this process. And what we're aiming to do is to get all of our standing advisory committees on an annual work plan so that the council knows what is coming from all of the various different committees and can integrate the elements that are coming back to council in terms of policy decisions into the work we're doing. We also want to ensure that the work of the committees is supporting the major goals of the council. And this council has put a number of projects in place that every one of the standing committees has some connection to some amount of policy that this council is trying to move forward. So, what we're doing tonight is simply aligning what the council is looking to do in the next year with what the committees are also thinking looks to be on the horizon. So, this is our first, our inaugural year of doing this and so, we're going to make our way through as best we can. The council has the work plan information from each of the committees and so, we have asked specifically not to receive any formal presentations tonight because we need to move through all seven of the committees before we have our thank you reception. So, the format will be that we will have the committee chairs come up along with their staff liaison, if the staff liaison is here with them. And then, rather than having a presentation, we will simply open it up to the council if there are any questions about the upcoming work plan, anything that we don't understand or something we think might be missing. We'll have that discussion with the folks who are involved with each of the committees. And then, the council may direct the committee in one way or another in terms of some of the work plan elements. Are there any questions from council before we start? Okay. We will go in the order in which the work plans are identified in the council packet. And so, we will start with the Social Equity and Racial Justice Advisory Committee. And up behind them will be the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee. Okay.
Good evening, councillors and mayor. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here and hear from you.
Fantastic. It's good to see you, Emily. Are there any other committee members from the Social Equity and Racial Justice Committee members? If you could raise your hand if you serve on the committee? Great. Thank you both for coming out. So, questions about the Social Equity and Racial Justice Committee? I have one. And that is, in the past, we've talked about a project with Southern Oregon University to better understand the city of Ashland's history in terms of policies that this body may have supported, both in the positive and also potentially in the negative back in the past. And I'm wondering where that consideration is. I don't see it on the list.
Is Barbara Garrity here?
Yes.
Okay. Barbara has been working on, were you working on that, Barbara?
Yes, I was.
Okay. Why don't you come up and answer the question?
And it may be that it's where we have the Support Ashland Together. Is that the element? It just, I didn't see the same pieces there. But it could be that you have it in your work plan and I'm just not recognizing it.
So, I filed a report, which was part, I think, of the minutes in September. I did research with SOU, Eva, the Southern Oregon Historical Society, Jeff LaLonde. I met with a lot of people. Just to bottom line it, I didn't find any overt actions on the part of the city of Ashland. There wasn't specific evidence, for example, that this was a send-down town. The Ku Klux Klan did march in the parade, there's a picture. But I didn't find anything overt. But what I did since, and I'm new here, I've only been here since March. So, let me just say, take all that with a grain of salt. But what I did here was beneath the surface, that there are just patterns of, let's say, microaggression, that it is not, that Ashland is not as welcoming as it can be if we all pull together. So, that kind of launched me into, launched all of us into our work plan and me specifically into the desire to establish listening circles that we hold monthly facilitated by BIPOC partners, each with a different area of emphasis focused on asking three questions and generating open conversations, which will not only make our BIPOC community feel heard and valued, but will give us real substance for our work plans going forward to make sure that they're rooted in what really needs to happen here. But I thank you for the project. It was a great learning curve for me.
Great. And thank you for following through on that. And it's good to hear that the city of Ashland has not had an overt role in that sort of thing. And then, just one other question, and that is, on the list here for upcoming years, to obtain DEI training for SIRJAC members. In our Social Equity and Racial Justice Resolution that was passed in 2020, one of the things we identified was also training for this council, for this body. And so, I'm wondering if that might be the same training, if there might be a way of combining the committee and the council so that we can receive that training that we have in the resolution.
There's two-part answer to that. The first point is, is that internally within SIRJAC, particularly with the new members and how we essentially have virtually an entirely new committee, is we have arranged and spent some of the money from Southern Travel Oregon to have an internal DEI meeting and coming together for that training. And Ann and I and Muse, who used to be my co-chair in the very beginning, has agreed to do that training for us. And that, I would say, is particularly internal to how we are interacting with each other and helping us identify our priorities and move forward in the future. That's the first part of the answer. Second part of the answer is simultaneously, we have been looking at doing a DEI training that would include members of city council, actually in conjunction with the AAUW. And once again, Barbara Garrity has been working on that as well in terms of potentially contracting with Mike and Emily Green for Common Ground, who I know the staff of the city of Ashland had some very successful trainings with. That there could that way then be a training that would be broader and broaden it out for city council, which we would very much like to see happen and are working on obtaining funding for that and are also working on obtaining, bringing that together and marshaling and using other community resources to help us afford a training that would be used for both the city and for a private entity.
Great.
It's a work in progress.
It's a work in progress. Okay. So, maybe it might be helpful to have that on as a bullet unless there are objections from council? No? Okay. Any other comments or thoughts about the upcoming work plan? Great. Wonderful.
I want to thank you. I want to thank you for helping us get new members. It has really injected both humor and more vitality into my own life. So thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for your good work. Thank you to the committee members. And we look forward to the, the good work that will happen in the new year. We move on now to the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee.
Hi. My name is Deb Price, and I'm representing our chair this evening because she's out of town.
And I'm Linda Reed. I'm the Housing Program Manager for the city of Ashland and the liaison for the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee. Great.
So, in light of the previous presentation, I think I'd like to start with asking, do you have questions? Or is there something other than what we've supplied for the meeting that you'd like to talk with us about?
I have a question.
Ask me.
The, the council has recently directed the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee to work on a homeless master plan. And I just didn't see it on this list. So I'm, I'm wondering if that is something that needs to be incorporated. Yeah. So we actually provided the information that was in this packet before you asked us to do that. And most recently, the committee had their goal-setting retreat. It was actually last week. And so they have added a few goals to that, although they are substantially similar to what we have already.
We have had some absences occur on the committee as a whole. So we are attempting to fill that space, those spaces, and build up our numbers for the special committee work. So that is very much in the works and will be addressing it, we hope, the first couple of weeks in January.
Great.
Counselor Bloom.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I would like to, to add for, for folks at home that the committee does a lot of work that's also beyond homelessness. And for instance, there is a subcommittee being put together for workforce housing that I think is really important. And so please, anybody in the community that wants to be involved in that, not just in regards to being on the committee, but being involved in those discussions, please apply and reach out.
Yes, we're hoping to broaden our scope a bit in terms of that portion of the committee's work. We have a lot of folks who are very interested in where the available land might be and where we need to work on getting some more available housing. So we definitely have that on the radar and that will be worked on also beginning in January, we hope.
Is that right? And then I had just a question around bullet number two, where encourage collaboration and communication regarding emergency shelter needs. So following, I just want to be, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page with what is coming. And so we are anticipating the homeless master plan to, to come to us at the end of spring, early summer next year. And then following that is when we will undertake a more detailed site planning process for the new site at 2200 Ashland Street. And that will be a different process that is council-driven, but it will certainly involve you all helping with exactly these items that you have identified here with that community engagement and, and helping to involve the community. Any questions about how that structure is laid out from the council? Does that sound right? Okay, great. Can, can show the hands, anyone who serves on the Housing and Human Services Advisory Council? Is there anyone else who is here with them? Okay. Well, we are, oh, Counselor Kaplan.
Yeah, we should just also say, just realizing that in all these bullet points, there's no mention of some of the grant programs that the, that the committee reviews. There's Community Development Block Grant, the Housing Trust Fund, all of that takes on a substantial portion of work of the committee. It's just regular work. It doesn't show up in, in this set of, of points, but it'll still happen next year.
Yes, that's true. We did go over those deadlines and the requirements that we need to fulfill in reviewing the committee's applicants. And we have our, we definitely have our work laid out for us. And Linda keeps us right on track, so.
Well, you do have your work laid out for you, and we appreciate that. The, the housing issue, I think, is one of the things that this council ends up having a lot of discussion about. The housing production strategy is a very big part of our, our future goals. And we see some of the elements of that already showing up on your work plan to have you help us with it. So thank you so much for your good work. And we look forward to, to what the new year brings with several of these initiatives. And feel free to add those bullets for the things that still take up a lot of the committee's time. It's always helpful to understand the full breadth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank you on behalf of the whole committee because they do work really hard. And they're very tuned in to what you would like to see and what the citizens of Ashland need. So again, thank you for being engaged. We appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll move on to Public Arts Advisory Committee. And please raise your hand if you're part of that committee. Fantastic. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Stanley Smith. I'm the vice chair of the committee.
And I'm Ken England, chair. And we have our esteemed staff person.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Chenoweth. I'm an associate planner and the staff liaison for the committee.
Great. Well, thank you for putting forward your 2024 goals. Councilors, are there any questions? So recently, we've had a, a suggestion put forward, and it's one that has been floated in the past around the underpass over on the southeast side of town. And there's a lot of concern around the underpass right now for a number of different reasons. And, and the idea has been put forward for us to consider some sort of a mural, some sort of a, a beautification of that space, in addition to some of the other elements that are being put into that, that side of town to, you know, encourage people to walk the bike path and, and to be part of that element. So is that, I see, we, I see the southeast that discuss and consider public art projects for southeast Ashland, and that that's coming up in January. So is that something that could be considered in all of that? I, I do not know how to build a mural. Just let me say that right up front. And you certainly don't want me painting one. But is that something that, that the committee could consider?
Absolutely. And there's, there's actually one of our new residents here, John Pugh, is a world-renowned mural artist. And in fact, there's a proposal in front of us right now to help fund a really interesting mural. I think you've, you've seen that, that presentation here. But yeah, we certainly could consider something like that. It hasn't come before us yet, as far as I know, but, but absolutely, yeah.
And there are a number of muralists that we could draw upon.
Counselor Kaplan?
No, I'm on this particular topic. I have the other question.
Okay. So the other, just the other element that I'm interested in for that section of town is where you have the, the traffic controller boxes with the, that, that art. And wondering if that might be one of the ways that we start helping, you know, with that section of town is potentially to focus those traffic controller box art piece, work pieces on that side of town. I know that there was some connection to the university as well, but the university is also essentially on that, on that side of our town.
Yeah, we, we had a, a call for artists. I, I don't think we had many.
We did.
We, we had a few applications, right. So I'm, I'm not really sure the status of that project right now.
So we have a selection committee that's meeting, and over the next two or three weeks, that will be done. We pick specific ODOT boxes in order to capitalize on people's interest. And subsequently, other people have said, well, I'd like to make that 500 bucks and be one also.
So maybe there's a, maybe there's a, there's a way to move that and get more of those boxes done, if, if community members are interested in sponsoring them. Great. Counselor Kaplan?
Yeah, thanks. I, I was interested in the first two items, the two, one is the mural that you, that you mentioned by John Pugh. And then the other is the Crystallizing Our Call by Micah Blacklight. That there's fundraising efforts going on. They were presented to us, you know, many months ago. And I'm just wondering what the, what the process is or what the progress is in raising the funds that are necessary for those two good pieces of art. And what it means when, with, by the committee supporting those. Because I think it's, you know, they need the support. And anything we can do to, to help those two pieces become a reality would be great.
So we have, with regard to the first one, Micah Blacklight's ancestors, yeah, what's the title, ancestors of future, Crystallizing Our Call. We've been working diligently. There was a hiatus while Micah went east for the summer. He has, I think, as I mentioned in our presentation, gotten the contribution of a pledge for steel. Other than that, it's slow-going. And probably we need to find a champion that is willing to take the lead on that and maybe with committee approach. That is happening with John Pugh's work. A pair of champions has come forward and they have a plan. I won't divulge that just now, but they're working to put that together. And hopefully that will bring about a major shift in the fundraising. It's a hard time for philanthropists.
Right. Great. Thank you very much. That's, that's good insight.
And then just the last element that, that it would be good to consider for the southeast end of town is the crosswalk artwork. There's new crosswalks coming in to that section of town. So we've had a lot of construction kind of disturbance, and there might be some opportunities to consider. So I would just request, and if that's appropriate, if council agrees, that, that in, in all of those efforts that you're looking at, let's see where we can make the connection to the southeast side of town. Sound right?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Any last questions or thoughts? This is quite a work plan you all have in front of you. And it's been so great to see the new art installations coming on these last several years and the, the social equity frame that they're, that they're coming through on so many different levels. So thank you for your good work. And, and we look forward to seeing you. It looks like you might be coming back in front of us with the Public Arts Master Plan revision in the new year. So we should be watching for that. Okay, great. Thank you so much. And we'll move on now to the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. And please let us know if you serve on that committee by raising your hands. Great. Thank you. Okay, great. So do we have any questions? Counselor Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Derek, my question revolves around just the integration between the Historic Preservation Committee and Planning Commission, and just making sure that in the instances where those two teams have to work together, that those handoffs are going well, and if there's anything from this body that is needed to help in that.
I think those are going very well. And I'm, since I'm staffing the Historic Commission and overseeing the current planning program, I think it works well and gives me a position where I can provide oversight to, to any kind of integration that's needed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. And I see on the, on your list that you are digitizing texted photos of existing historic surveys. Good for you. Well done. That does not sound like a, an easy task. And I remember when I, I think I was your liaison for all of a month, the discussion around the importance of getting all of those historic documents into something that's, that's protected for future generations. So any thoughts about what, what that is going to look like?
That's an aspiration.
Yes, that's what it would be.
I think we've had some outreach to the original consultant that prepared those reports. And there's the ability to access the negatives that were used for those original photos. But we haven't identified funding to do that, that work yet. So.
And I also see that we're looking to update our historic preservation plan. And so we, the council could expect to potentially see that, although it looks like it might need to be done inside the committee?
I think what we've talked about, and we've had some false starts, but we haven't really begun it, is doing that as, as a subcommittee project within the committee. So I think it may be a well.
Yeah. Most of these things require funding, and we don't get funding from the city. So Derek does a fabulous job, but he only has so many hours to put into this, this committee. So we'll, we are going to continue to try and be creative about how to do these things. We did, I would like to share some good news, which is that Travel Ashland, Travel, let's see, Oregon.
Southern Oregon.
Southern Oregon Travel granted the Jackson County Heritage Association money to develop a new brochure on historic sites to update those for the whole county. And also to, hopefully, this will be coming forward to you at some point, try to make the information on the Historic Advisory Committee Preservation, Historic Preservation, H-PAC is really what I'm going to cite. H-PAC is wanting to see, that was one of our goals, is to consolidate the data on historic sites. And that's part of what the grant is paying for. So we'll be benefiting from another person's, Maureen Battistella's, working on this project. And she's got a long history in his, Southern Oregon history. So that's a, a real bonus for us. That's a bit of good news. The other good news, can I tell you?
Sure.
Is that the medallions from the MAP-2, which was a collaboration between Public Arts and Historic Preservation, they were all finally installed last week.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
They look great. Thank you.
Wonderful. Any other comments or questions? Wonderful. Thank you so much for your good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Sabrina, I wonder if, if the, the grant folks that we have on board, if they might just keep their eyes open for anything that might help us get these couple of projects done for, for, for our historic preservation. Thank you. So we move on now to Climate and Environment Policy Advisory Committee. And please let us know if you are in the audience and you serve on that committee. Just giving us a wave. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rick Barth. I'm the vice chair of the Climate and Environment Policy Advisory Committee. The chair is out of town for the holidays.
All right. Chad Woodward, the Climate and Energy Analyst for the city of Ashland.
Great. Great to see you both. Questions? I have a question. The, the one question that I am wondering about is that the, the city has, is, is undertaking the electric master plan process. And it was my understanding that, that this committee would be kind of moving alongside the electric department during that conversation and, and, you know, providing feedback and thoughts from a climate standpoint. Is that something that is, I don't see it on this list. And so I'm just wondering if, where the, where that thinking is in terms of the committee?
Well, in the summer, the department had came to the committee and we had a conversation during which I was left with the impression that a few of the committee members who have some expertise in electrical planning would be involved with the planning work that's going on. But that has not happened.
So, so it would seem that maybe that would be some direction from the council, if the council is interested in that, that we get that bullet back on the list for the committee?
Well, I don't think it's a committee. Staff has not reached out to the committee to actually implement that.
Right. But at some point, we're just now getting in, started in that planning process. And I think at some point, there will be an opportunity for the committee to either be involved in that planning process from an earlier stage or to review what the, what the draft master plan looks like. And it would seem that this body would want to hear the committee's thoughts about any sort of draft master plan.
Subsequent to the proposal that council received, I believe on December 4th, we distributed that master plan to the CPAC. And there were some concerns expressed in our last commission meeting. And I forwarded the, the desire for committee members to be able to speak with Stoddard, the contractor for the master electric plan. Stoddard, the contractor for the master electric plan. And the director of electric has asked that they submit their questions to him so that he can forward them and get those questions answered at this point in time.
So would council like to hear directly from this committee regarding the draft electric master plan in the course of our deliberations? Council Bloom.
Yeah, I, I'm, maybe I'm misreading, but I'm seeing it here for the 2024 goals, provide a comprehensive review to the council on natural gas ordinance options. Is that separate?
It's different.
Okay.
Yeah. But they're both linked in terms of energy production. Yeah. Yeah. So it sounds like we have some, a request of the committee that, that the council receive comments on that draft master plan. Council Hyatt.
Just clarification, because the master plan itself also has to deal with just the our electric system and function. And then there is also the energy generation and the climate element. I just want to make sure that our staff has their ability to navigate the, I'm probably not delineating this right. I absolutely want to hear from the climate policy, but I want to make sure that just from the infrastructure system perspective, that our staff also has the autonomy they need to do the work.
Yeah. I believe that they, they would because what the committee would be doing is making comments to city staff and to the council on, specifically to the climate side of that. Council Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Policy Committee. I, I think the opportunity lies in, you know, perhaps after the master plan is done in, in reviewing the recommendations from that, really drilling into opportunities that the, that the city might have from a, from a, you know, resiliency standpoint or, you know, new policies around making it more attractive to do more climate friendly projects in the city of Ashland. And I know that the, the group has, you know, a varying broad range of expertise that could think outside the box. So as, as a, as a policy body, I think we would like to hear ideas as, as recommendations to the, the electric department as well as, as council. So I think that would be very helpful. It's a great idea and thank you for your hard work.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
I, I think it's fair to say that the planning work that's going on right now is sort of project focused. And do you want us to maintain that sort of focus or do you want us to be thinking more strategically and coming back with recommendations about a strategic plan for the electric utility?
I would anticipate that we would be interested in both of those elements. We have our climate and energy action plan and we need to be thinking about how does the development of our electric utility work into that from a strategic standpoint. We also, of course, have the specific project elements that are important as well. So unless I hear differently, it would seem that this council would be interested in the, both of those comments. Is that correct? Council Bloom.
I guess, I guess my question would be, you know, from judging from experience with, with housing is, do you feel that your committee has the capacity to, to do both of those?
I think it's fair to say that a full strategic plan for a city like Ashland is a tremendous amount of work. And so, no, I don't think that the committee all by itself can produce such a thing. It would require additional resources.
Council Hanson.
Yeah, thank you. I, just, just to clarify, I wasn't suggesting a, a full strategic plan, more in that when the master plan comes back, what your committee would identify as potential projects or, or strategic goals or, or policies to implement, piggybacked on that, on that plan as opposed to launching a, a full-on strategic plan, if, if that makes sense. Most interesting, interesting to us right now, I think, are the opportunities that lie in, infrastructure opportunities to receive grants and to build our climate resiliency. And I, I'm, I'm just speaking as one counselor here, but, but thinking outside the box with regards to what is recommended from that master plan and, and ideas of where we can go.
Council Kaplan.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I recall that when we discussed the scope of work for the master plan this summer, we had a number, 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 number of us on the council had questions about how strategic it would be. And I think that the, and the answer at that time is that, no, it's not a strategic plan for our electric utility. It's a, it's a master plan that really focuses on reliability, you know, reliability, making sure that we've got the amount of resources that are necessary, that we can switch it, all that sort of thing. But it's not a look forward in any kind of strategic sense about what an electric utility in Ashland could be. And I think our very capable electric director at that time said, well, really you should put first things first. We should do a master plan and then there should be a, a strategic plan after that. I don't think that we should, can, can ask the CPAC to do the strategic plan, but I certainly would like to hear. We've got some pretty deep expertise from a few of the members, in particular of the, of the climate and environmental policy advisory committee. I'd like to hear their guidance on, on those strategic elements as we go forward. I'd like to hear their, their comments on what we heard from Stoddard last time, two weeks ago, because we heard some things that are, that go beyond in, in response to many of the questions that we made, that we asked. We heard some, with some of the linkages to some of the climate and, climate and, climate and energy action plan elements that are not typically a part of, of a master plan. So we heard part, we heard answers to that. We've talked for a long time about that two weeks ago. But I would also like to hear the reactions from folks with expertise in this area on the, on the CPAC. And I think that really should be focusing towards positioning us to do a full-blown strategic plan at the, at the right time, because I think that is something that we're going to need. We've got a lot of opportunity because we do on our electric utility. We could go on as we are and that would be perfectly fine, but it would be missing a lot of opportunities, in my view.
Does that give you the, the clarification you need?
I think this is a very deep topic and so in the interest of time, I, I think we should come back to you and sort of ask further clarifying questions at some later time.
Yes. And your council liaisons, I think, can probably also help with that. Council Hyatt.
I just wanted to thank Council Kaplan because I think you just articulated that delineation very well between the master plan and what we're looking for from a strategic perspective in the future and what we're going to see and what can actually be accomplished within the scope of each of those bodies of work. So thank you for that clarification and Rick, yes, it is, it is big. So I think that would be a great conversation to have with liaison and then if we need to get re-involved, we can.
Well, one of the things that we, this council has prioritized is to implement the, the climate and energy action plan that was put in place several years ago. And so thank you both for your good work. Thank the committee, I thank the committee for its good work. There is a lot to be done, as we all know, in transforming our relationship with energy and dealing with the impacts of climate change. And so we very much appreciate your good work and look forward to several of these things coming back to council over the course of the year. Thank you. And now we will call up the transportation committee.
Oh, my God.
And please, please, please let us know if you serve on the transportation advisory committee. Fantastic. Great to see you here. Okay. So transportation advisory committee, questions from council. Council Hyatt.
I've, I've got a question for Scott first.
Uh-oh.
What's the difference between a man in a tuxedo on a bicycle and a woman in a green onesie on a unicycle?
I have no idea.
A tire.
And Council Hyatt, lead us off.
I can't follow that. I just can't. My, my question is probably really just direct and straightforward. First off, I miss you all and it's good to see you here tonight, Linda. Thank you for the hard work and to the transportation committee as well. Curious what the current timeframe on the TSB is looking like. Are we still looking at the beginning of 2024?
So I had a conversation with ODOT, senior planner and local planner on the process. They are currently looking at taking a gap survey analysis of bike and pedestrian network in the city as part of building the background information for the TSB update. They are hiring additional staff to help support over 40 TSPs statewide that will need to be done to be compliant with the new transportation planning rule over the next few years. Ashland and Central Point locally are on the books for '24. They expect, once they get additional staff, they get the draft scope of work written up and do the consultant selection process. We should be starting the guts of the process in summer of '24. So there's the legwork that will be happening in early '24 to get us to the point where we can actually start the TSB update process.
One quick follow-up. Also curious if the near miss work is still something the committee is pursuing. When I transitioned out as liaison, it was just getting up and running. Member Brouillard had been doing some excellent work with Holly Christensen as well. And I just want to make sure that we're still proceeding because that was off to a good start.
Yes, we are. We still have the near miss application up, on, on the website and we continue to try to get it pushed out by the city so that we get more data coming in.
And the transportation committee also reviews that data set and the actual crash data set twice a year. Our next review date will be in January. We'll review the annualized near miss reports and then also the annualized crash data reports. So GIS is helping put that together right now for us for that January meeting. And those things will help drive some of the things that we'll look at in the transportation system plan update. Crashes and near misses are part of that process to look at system improvements to improve safety for all users.
It's some great work. So my sincere gratitude to both Mark and Holly and the team for the, the work you continue to do in that area.
Yeah, and we're also continuing that work with doing bike facility GIS mapping to determine where we need new bike racks in town. And since they're all sitting somewhere in a warehouse somewhere, we want to get them out there for where people can park their bikes more efficiently.
And that forum is available online now.
That is online now, too.
Correctly. So if people can go to that news item, I think it was just published in the last week or two, to, to give input in terms of where we need better bike parking.
That's right.
Yes. And it's my hope that as we update the website and our communications infrastructure here at the city, we'll be better able to get this kind of information out so that we can collect the kind of data that the committee needs in order to, to do its job. Any other questions or thoughts for the transportation advisory committee?
I have a thought.
Yeah. Council Kaplan.
Yeah, it's just a, I see there's a list of five council-directed projects for review. One of them is the Parklet program review. I'm wondering what's the, what's the timeframe on that, you know, among all the other things that you're working on. So we've been, go ahead.
Until we get more staffing, we've been, we've been trying to do outreach with both the chamber and SOU for both the scooter program and the Parklet program. And we haven't had much information back from them.
I think one of the things in coordination with the chamber for the Parklet program was resolving what they are looking at for their four-pillar structure that they're currently advocating for. So we've had a couple of meetings with chamber representatives on how to best get feedback from the downtown business community and others about how to look at the Parklet program. In conjunction with the Parklet program, one of the things that's come up is our old, and I will say old because it's 2011, encroachment ordinance and guidelines which resolve around sidewalk dining and how things are structured within the right of way. I think part of that needs a fresh look moving forward and it ties into the Parklet program because it ties into sidewalk dining. Some of the things that were put in that old guideline structured document just need a fresh look for today's standards and how the city and the businesses wish to operate in the downtown core. We've talked about this recently. So I think that that's something that will gel into the Parklet program and the work that the transportation advisory committee is doing.
And in collaboration with the downtown projects, I mean, the four pillars, but with the, basically the revitalization grants that are available for downtown businesses now.
Council Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. The Parklet program was, was brought forth at the beginning of the year, a revised idea for, for dining. But then it has been a, a source of lots of ideas since then. What does a Parklet program look like in the rest of Ashland beyond downtown? And, and then off of ODOT, what are the opportunities? Because the, ODOT has restrictions on Ciscu that are, are prohibitive in, in downtown. So there's a desire from the chamber to reach out to not only downtown businesses, but to Ashland businesses, which is a big task. And then, you know, further ideas have been, well, if we, if we're going to have restaurant dining for parking spaces, maybe retail should, should have a hand in that. Maybe we could put clothing racks in parking spaces. And then other ideas are, well, well, that's not what my business wants. We want a bike rack out front of our bus. So, so this great idea has, has, is getting a life of its own and it still is on the rails and getting addressed, but the, the scope has crept. And, and I must just say that, that, that this committee is where the rubber meets the road. And you, uh-huh, thank you. And you look at this list of, of goals and, and then you look at accomplishments of what this committee has done this last year and before my time. It's, it really is impressive, the work that this committee puts into Ashland. So I wanted to thank them very much for all their hard work and their continued efforts for making Ashland a, a better, more affordable, climate-friendly place to live by addressing climate and transportation needs. Thank you.
And we couldn't do it without Scott and the rest of the Public Works team.
Yes. Amen.
And Leah Light.
And Gias.
So thank you so much for your good work. Any final questions or thoughts? There is, this is quite a work plan in front of you all as well and looking forward to seeing some of these, these ideas coming forward and kind of seeing where we get in the middle of next year. But we, we now know what to expect coming from the transportation advisory committee, so thank you.
We're checking them off one at a time.
Yes, you are. Thank you both.
Thank you.
And the last one is the planning commission. And so the planning commission, if, if you're here from the planning commission, please give us a wave so we know where you're at. Wonderful. The planning commission is a little bit different because it is a quasi-governmental committee that has specific tasks and requirements that are different from the other ones. And so theirs looks a little bit different, but I'll go ahead and, and hand it across. And if you can both speak in closely to your mics, that will be helpful.
Thank you, Mayor. Brandon Goldman, community development director and staff liaison to the planning commission.
Lisa Werner, planning commission chair.
Great. Great to see you both.
Thank you.
Questions for our planning commission?
Oh, thank you. We'll go home.
Council Bloom.
Hi. Good to see you.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question about the, the manufactured home park zones and if, if you could just give a rough timeline, I'm not a liaison to that. I'll obviously speak to Council Hyatt about this, but I'd like to kind of sit in and kind of listen to what you're talking about as it relates to the housing commission as well.
Yeah, so I'd most definitely extend an invitation when we have this as a planning commission study session and item. We did apply for a grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development to assist with consultant services for this project. They alerted the city that there was a shortage of funds to direct to housing and so we were put on a waitlist. But I think that given that this is a priority goal in our housing production strategy, it will be one that we'll undertake at a staff level to prepare that. So that does extend the timeline a bit, probably beginning it in March or April. And typically, an ordinance amendment process can be anywhere from 12 months to 18 months. But hopefully, we might be able to accelerate that and complete it in 2024.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Council Hyatt.
Less of a question, more of a statement. It's a shame you guys, it's so boring. It's so boring hanging out with, no, I'm kidding, clearly. It is never a dull day and there are never two meetings alike. And for that, I just want to take the opportunity to thank the committee, the commission because it is a lot of dense work. It is intense reading, testimony and the like, and a lot of study has to go in ahead of time to navigate some of the land use planning and type-two specific items that come before the group. So my sincere So my sincere gratitude for all that you put in in preparation, and all that you put into the meetings themselves, and I also want to take a moment, because in this list is the Updated Economic Opportunities Analysis, and I do believe we will have an item on this tomorrow on consent, the team did apply and received, is my understanding, grant monies to work this item. This is at the request of council, I want to say about a few months back, I can't remember exact timing, but the planning team brought their A-game, and that grant has come forward for us to accept, we'll be hearing more tomorrow, but Brandon, thank you, thank you to you, Derek, Aaron, and the team, and for all that you keep doing to field the many things that, that this group has to navigate, you're appreciated.
I would also like to second that and say staff has been wonderful. Derek, and Brandon, and Jennifer have been absolutely wonderful, have supported us, and we really appreciate that.
And Michael.
And Michael.
Michael keeps us all in line.
I could name about 13 others.
I bet you could, I definitely.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yeah, thanks, just a couple of things, I also want to thank you for the initiative to, I know that the Housing Production Strategy, the manufactured park zone change was something that was a priority for 2024 in the Housing Production Strategy, and it was a disappointment that we didn't get funding for, so I appreciate the staff's, you know, really putting, putting the effort behind getting it done, you know, as soon as possible. My question is really about the last item, which is the Development Process Management Advisory Committee, that's going to result, and at some point, some recommendations are to the council, I suppose, for some changes, could, can you give us a timeframe on that?
Sure, I can speak better to this than Lisa, as the Planning Commission member, Carrie Concaron, who sits on the Development Process Management Advisory Committee, is not here, but we have identified that we would do four to five meetings, we've already held the first two meetings of the, this DP MAC, and in that process, they looked at a survey that was done of all the building permit and planning application applicants from 2018 until December of 2022, and evaluated all the responses from those. The intent of the committee, as we move into our third meeting, will be to focus on what recommendations they see for streamlining our development process, to assist builders and developers in navigating through our internal processes. Some of the review that was done at the last meeting had to do with streamlining our building permit application process as an online portal, as opposed to coming into the front door and going through a paper process. The intention is to have them meet again at the end of January, at the end of February, and at that point, determine whether they need to meet one more time to formalize recommendations, to bring back to the city manager, which will then get scheduled on a council, future council agenda after March or April.
Go ahead, Counselor Kaplan.
Great, thanks very much, Brandon, it sounds like some of these things that you're talking about really are just, are operational within your department, within the city, you know, coordinating with others, and could just be done, they don't really require a council review or approval, it's so happy, would be, look forward to those things going forward, but also being informed of what some of those things are, because we often get questions, you know, why does it take so long to do this, or what's the process for that, so even though we may not, you know, need to approve it, and it's, you know, within your hands, it'd be good to report that, so the community knows precisely. Thank you.
So one of the other things that I see on here, there are several things, and we know that a fair amount of what the Planning Commission does is to review, review applications, but then there are also these other elements that are critically important in terms of some of our bigger goals, and we just heard about some of them in terms of streamlining, we've certainly heard that from the business community, that they need help being able to navigate when they're, when they're looking to make changes to their physical structures, but also the climate-friendly areas, land use designations are part of this, the Economic Opportunities Analysis update that the council is, is very much wanting to have to help us direct our, the future economic development activities, and then the, you know, just the ongoing integration of legislation, and what does that mean for our land use laws? And I think just from that description, it, it's pretty clear that not everyone is suited to this kind of work. The Planning Commission has to dive deep into, into very detailed, complex requirements, ordinances, legislation, and all of that, in order to make sure that we're doing our job the very best way that we can here at the city. And so, thank you so much, I think often, it's easy to, to forget the critical role that the Planning Commission plays in so many of the goals that we have as a community, and so thank you so much for your good work. Any last thoughts for the Planning Commission? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And that takes us to the end of this portion of the meeting. Just a couple of things, when we think about our committees going forward, the committee chairs have already started to organize themselves into a brown bag lunch, once a month or so, so that they can do that cross-coordinating, so in the new year, I will be looking to support that, and, and be able to attend as many of those as I can, as well, just to keep the, keep the conversation moving between the committees. Today, and in the information we saw here, we can see a lot of the point of intersection between the work that these different committees are doing, so at the city, we want to support that collaboration across the committees, and then we will also, we are also taking applications, there are a couple of committees, four of the committees currently have openings, and so I just want to announce where those are. We have a student representative space that is still available on the Climate and Environmental Policy Advisory Committee, and then we have typical regular slots available on the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee, and the Social Equity and Racial Justice Advisory Committee. And the last thing I would just say is that when this council restructured the committees last year, one of the things that we did is we created two potential additional slots for each of the standing committees, not for the Planning Commission, but for the standing committees, for students that are in high school or college, and so if a committee, if students come forward to serve on those committees, it essentially creates a new, a new voting slot, they get to vote as long as they're 18 years old, but there, so each one of the committees also has space for students, and so this is, I'm putting this out into the larger community, if you know of any young people who are interested in serving on these committees, please encourage them to apply, even if it doesn't look like there is a vacancy when you go to the website. We are very much wanting to engage them. And with that, any final comments? Okay, it is now time to have our reception, and to say thank you in person for all of your good work, and so with that, I will close this part of the meeting, I can gavel it down, is that correct? Okay, meeting adjourned.